So it is now 6:04 PM on Monday, February 26th. I'd like to call the Woodbury Select Board meeting to order. Do we have any adjustments to the Select Board agenda for this evening?
Well, it sounds like Brandy had something for under the Road Commissioners Report.
That's okay. That can be during her report. That's fine. We're in the process of approving bills and payroll orders. Those will be done by end of, well, by tomorrow. The minutes from the February 12th meeting have been reviewed and approved and are now back to the Town Clerk. And we're now open for public comment, please. Everybody's playing pickleball.
Oh, is that what all those cars are?
Okay. Here you go, public comment. Mrs. Turkey, can we have the Town Clerk's report, please?
I have been busy with elections. We have Tuesday night is the annual meeting for the elementary schools, which will be at Highwick Elementary School. Wednesday is the annual meeting for Hazen, yeah, Hazen. Thursday night is our pre-town meeting. We'll be here at the elementary school. Saturday is our town meeting, starting at 10 o'clock at the school. And Pam and I will be testing voting machines. Don't know how long it's gonna take, 'cause I don't know how many little errors we will come across, but we're starting tomorrow. And then the Presidential school vote will be here at the school on Tuesday, the 5th.
Oh, it's at the school? Okay.
Yes. And somebody said a note had been put out that Tuesday's meeting was gonna be in the town hall, so I'll put up one of the sandwich boards to tell them it's at the school.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Do you want me to take minutes at the town meeting?
Sure.
Or would you and Pam wanna do that? I'm fine with doing it if you...
Pam is gonna be signing people in.
Okay, alright.
Yep. And Highwick TV will be there also.
Okay, alright.
Yep.
Well, I'm happy to do it if it would be helpful, but...
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Michael.
And... I believe that's what I have.
Anything that you need from us to make sure that this goes as smoothly as possible?
Show up.
Yeah, that's always something.
Thanks, Paul.
I was laughing at that, I just said, "How is it working smoothly?"
I said, "As smoothly as possible." There's a caveat in there.
What you gotta do is do something, and something will break or not work right.
Do you need any help with anything that you can think of at the moment?
Right at the moment, no.
Okay.
You got all your ballot clerks?
Yes.
Wonderful.
I do.
Thank you.
Yep.
And we're all expected to be there Thursday, I'm assuming, right? I haven't been to a pre-town meeting before, but...
It's up to you.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a good thing. I, you know...
I'll plan on it.
Usually not a lot of people show up.
Okay.
But the thing that you will have to be at is Tuesday night.
Oh.
For the counting, when the polls...
When the polls close at 7:00, we all have to be there.
Okay, so show up at 7:00 on Tuesday? Okay.
So, but, so that's...
It's just for the Presidential.
Okay.
The school will be taken to the elementary school in Highwick.
So the BCA will need to, like, feed the ballots into the machine?
No, but remember, we have to go through and make sure the balance is what...
We have to do a manual account to make sure that we're checking it.
It's just a double check for the computer.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds good.
I think that's it.
Alright, thank you, Mrs. Turkey. Ms. Smith, could you do the Town Treasurer's report, please?
Okay. Reports in front of you, balance sheet, financial statement, due to, due from. Over the last two weeks, we took in about $932.30 in cash receipts. For delinquencies, $1,665.56. Payroll, the last two weeks, $10,674.47. Accounts payable, $19,165.76. Today, I transferred $24,000 to cover bills. goodies I want to go over. So, I tweaked our... Yeah, please, I'm gonna do. One, two, and three. Made some revisions. This is gonna be the mowing.
Thank you.
Proposal to add...
Thank you.
To go up for mowing. So, slideboard's input, are we doing this annually? Are we gonna try and do a two, a three-year?
Could you say the town of Woodbury is seeking, rather than are seeking? Is this gonna have to go in the paper?
Yeah, that's the purpose of them.
The whole...
Would it be done in the past, Brandy, for a timeframe on that? Have we usually done it yearly?
No.
Okay.
We, the last one was a three-year contract.
Has it worked out pretty well, doing it that way?
Well, now, we're separating from the cemeteries, so...
This is the first time we've done this just on our own.
Right. So, anything you have, change them, bounce me an email, and then going forward, so we can have the dates that I put in match for getting them back, having you open them, and then having somebody line up for Memorial Weekend to make sure they're all pretty.
Do you remember when the cemetery bids are due?
I do not know.
Okay.
The cemetery bids are due, but that doesn't have to do with us.
If we don't get any here, what?
That doesn't have to do with us.
I realize that, but if we don't get anybody for this, we might be able to get them to tag on.
We've already, I've already handed out, we've already had people inquiring.
Oh, good. Oh, great. Great.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Licensed, business comp, all that good stuff. I had also given you the LCT Incident Report. If any one of our vehicles is in an incident, whether it's off the side of the road, hitting a barn, knocking over a mailbox, any damage, one of those needs to be filled out and filed at the town office. Specs are on the back, even explaining where was it usable on the road, all sorts of goodies.
So this is in case of an accident? It says driver's report of accident.
Or incident. Well, if the truck's over in the ditch, I think it's an incident, an accident, or if it were intentional.
So it can be filled out almost immediately. Let's get back into the practice of it, it sounds like. Ms. Brandy, any other comments you'd like to make as part of the Town Treasurer's report?
No.
Not as of now, other than the mowing. I will have to look into other, other things that need to go out for bids, sand, all that good stuff, fuel again before fall.
Alright. We're a little bit ahead of schedule at this point. And we had some people join late, so we can reopen for public comment for a moment, if anybody has anything, now that we actually have some folks here. Okay. Then we will head on to the report on the status of office heating system replacement from Diana and Robin.
So, we had, I made some calls to some providers, and one responded, Gillespie Fuels, who happened to be our fuel provider, was happy to come. The others, some of the other ones that I called seemed to not wanna come unless we were their customer already, but whatever, Gillespie's been good to us for all these years. They came, Robin and I went down in the basement, and he looked all around, and we told him what we were looking for to, because the insurance company was willing to buy us a new furnace, even though their price was a little low. We also talked with him, he suggested that we consider going to propane. He said, "Even though a gallon of propane has about 30% less heat to use than a gallon of oil, it's more efficient, and the price generally works out." I mean, they have them go up and down, so I don't know how you can expect a good estimate on that. But the one thing about is, if we go to oil, I guess our chimney doesn't have a liner, so if we go to gas, we don't have to worry about that. But if we stay with oil, in order to be up to code, we might have to line that big old...
Yes, 'cause you have to do a level 3 inspection to change the appliance, so you don't need to do it.
Yikes, okay.
Yes, you will.
So if we, so if we did go to gas, that would be the first estimate here, which material and labor, including some changes to the ductwork, and the insurance adjuster did include some ductwork work, so I guess we could call that all part of the deal, $7,541.
But Gillespie's also stated there was nothing wrong with our furnace.
Right.
Yeah, so if you wanna, so, it seems to me, and I've said this before, I think if they wanna pay for us to replace our 20-year-old furnace, I think that's a deal we should not give up. He did tell us that the expected useful life was about 25 years, that's...
They're only giving us, like, two grand left on the furnace, right?
Yeah.
Well, that's the other thing, I wanted to talk about this also. I don't understand what's going on with all this, with all this back and forth with the insurance company, but they did say that if you don't, you know, if one of the prices doesn't come out right, you can ask, you can ask for more.
It's gonna take us forever.
It says, "Any request for supplemental funds must be made prior to the work being done. If the contractor you choose thinks he or she is unable to complete the specified repairs for the amount allowed in our estimate, please have your contractor contact me immediately." Any request must be made prior to the work being done. So there is an opening there for more, for more than the... The $3,438 that they offered versus, their, their price also includes depreciation. If we paid the $7,541, if they took that as our cost, they would take off depreciation also of that.
Should we show them this quote?
Well, that's what, that's what I was thinking, I would, but I didn't wanna step on any toes. Brandy's been dealing with these people, but I...
Oh, no, I send the emails to the board, so that I'm not the one.
Oh, okay, so I can contact her and...
Well, yeah, but sooner than later, 'cause this has been dragging on since July 10th.
Right, yeah, I know, and we waited so long to get...
If we keep picking up, I mean, stuff that's important to me is, our bulkhead is crap. I mean, it's damage from the water running down the stairs, that immediately, in my eyes, should be fixed or included into that.
You mean the door?
Yes, in the bottom door.
Yeah.
There's no insulation on the other side of the door, so you're losing heat loss right there.
But was that even...
No.
Storm damage?
Well, yeah, the water was running down the stairs.
Yeah, but did it damage the door? I mean, was that included in his original estimate?
No.
Is it too late to add that in?
No, she's going back, no, it's not.
Okay.
But I think...
You wanna estimate for that?
Whether it's homemade jobby, the one that's down there, it's wood, it's oversized, I don't, if you could take a look at it...
It's gonna be really expensive then, right?
Well, wood-wise, it's gonna have to be create, yeah, I don't...
Okay.
I think you'd have to do a whole...
As far as carpentry? Yeah. You would have better insight than me, replacing that and doing it correctly.
I will come take a look and give you a number, and then I guess we can...
Yeah, I just send it off to her, and...
Okay, cool.
That'd be nice to have that look.
Did either of the two people that I...
One.
One, Nicky Ma?
The FEMA, yeah.
Okay, cool.
Very nice, introduced herself.
I think I have to remind the other person, Hume's Ice Fish, and when I got ahold of him, stuff, he might have been distracted.
He's missing, but yeah.
So I'd like you guys to think about whether or not we should, well, the other thing is FEMA's gonna pay at least some of the difference, after the insurance pays what they're gonna pay. So we might up, might end up only getting 87% of the total, still. It seems like a savings in the long run. They also said that they could do the, the pressure tank and a little bit of plumbing in there for the price that the insurance adjuster had given, about $1,500, so that's why that's, and here is the third item. So then, we just have to decide, if we wanna go to gas, it's gonna be $1,557 more. But what did he say about the liner, like $1,500?
$1,500 to $1,800.
So that covers it, so it's a wash already, and the fuel is cheaper?
And your propane is so much cheaper than oil.
Seems like that would make sense.
And they could put two, they could put a couple of tanks out and back, like, on the far side of the bulkhead, so that we wouldn't have to be going into the neighbor's driveway all the time.
Stuffing up.
And they could fill it up right from the parking lot.
If you're updating your furnace, I would think you could get some monies from efficiency law.
Oh, they'll probably want us to get a piece of it or something.
Well, no, I mean, they'd like to see anybody...
Yeah, possibly.
...update and improve.
We did have an energy audit by them, was it two years ago now?
Two years ago, yeah.
They might help with the windows, too, I wonder.
And they talked about doing some spray foam on the walls in the basement, and also the door. They said, let's see, "We can support the foundation spray foam and bulkhead door insulation slash air sealing, as well as the attic air sealing and adding more insulation." I don't think we're interested in doing that at this point, but he did say that can happen all at once or in phases. The incentive would be 75% of project cost, up to $5,000. Yeah, they didn't really mention the, the heating system.
Well, that wasn't, that really wasn't an issue yet.
Right, well, it was still an old heating system.
Wasn't something we were concerned.
Right, right. And the energy auditor didn't make a note of it.
Alright.
So I guess where we'll go from here is, I will contact the, the insurance company with that, with this actual price.
With our new quotes.
And see what they can do about that.
Thank you.
At some point, we'll decide about switching to gas.
Yeah, let's see what they'll give us on the quote first.
Yeah.
Because it's gonna take us a long time to get any FEMA money, if that's the direction we're going in.
Well, yeah, well, I mean, yeah, we're waiting for $300,000 already, so what's a couple hundred, what's a couple thousand more?
Money that we have to pay.
Well, yeah.
To get the work done, before they pay us.
Right.
Adds up. Okay. Ms. Turkey, did you wanna add anything to that, to those comments? Okay.
Other than that, we shouldn't totally rule out heat pumps.
Heat pumps would be a nice air conditioning in the south.
Yes.
Well, yeah, after the blocky or jamming.
Yep.
It's very expensive, air conditioning.
Could make it a more functional space, though.
Yeah, but the building's only used in the morning.
Make it a more functional space, though. Okay, Paul, would you...
I don't have a lot, not a lot is changed. I'm trying to get the rest of that town hall stuff cleaned out and get more mopped in the bathrooms, hopefully in another week or so.
Okay.
Turn that, 'cause then, and then, you've got space over at the town hall, the mooler. Yeah, is Tim aware of it, is like, if I got some guys on a Saturday, does he have access to it, so we could just move that stuff into it? Or do you wanna be involved in that?
Well, I'd kinda like to see what it is.
It's just not very, we can go look at it at some point, it's just in the front corner there, it's just some recovery.
I mean, there's two options, is that little shed next to the cell shed, and the colonics box.
Okay, 'cause that's the only thing left in there, is just getting that stuff out, and then we'll mop it and clean it up, and it's ready to go again. As far as FEMA...
Tim would have access to, to you.
Okay, I'll talk, I'll call you if I can, if we're in that time, 'cause we'd like to get that done, we haven't just gotten it done yet. FEMA, the Terry Holt, we got a new FEMA guy, another new FEMA guy.
Right.
So I finally got all the paperwork from him, so I think we're rounding the corner with the response and the cleanup stuff that we are owed money for. Well, we'll get it about the same time, I don't know when we'll get the money, but the paperwork's in, I've got a little bit of work left to do with him. The station itself, we're in the determining that it's more 50, more than 50% damaged phase of the process right now, so there, this Terry's supposed to get together with the architect that wrote the letter, and make FEMA happy with what the letter says, 'cause it, we're more than 50% of the building's value damaged, but the letter apparently doesn't meet FEMA's speak, so. And then, then we would, well, I don't know what exactly happens, but it means they would rebuild that building to new standards, flood resilient.
Really?
We would establish that, that's the next step. We, I don't know what that looks like, or what, I just don't know, so...
As opposed to tearing it down?
Yeah, so it's a process, right? It's a process, so then we, we would establish that cost, and FEMA would pay their 90, or whatever they're gonna pay, and we would either do it, or the other alternative is apply for a... Well, that's two steps, it's like, you could apply for an alternative project, or we could put one more bay on the new building, and get that whole thing out of where floods, but that's two steps down the road, so we're just trying to bite off a little piece of the elephant, 'cause it just seems like you do one thing, and then there's the next thing you gotta do, so I, where is that, the step where we'll decide the building's is or isn't more than 50% damaged right at this point? So that's not part of it.
Did finally get some insurance money.
We did, yeah, we did finally get the insurance check, but they hosed us pretty bad, so we, you know, worked $30,000 to $40,000 less than what we have for damage at the mall. So again, all this is gonna play into what FEMA ultimately pays, because, like, in the conversation you were just in, if the building's determined that it's, it's too damaged, then they may make us go back to the insurance company to max out the policy, which is, I think, $350,000 for the building. Because if you're in the same boat with the town clerk's office, they will have to pay what the actual costs are, minus depreciation, up to the limits of the policy, so always make sure you keep, if you got actual costs, just make sure you verify the actual cost. If we end up fixing that building, again, they would have to step in, if we spend more than what they've paid, minus depreciation, up to the limits of the policy, if that makes any sense for everybody.
Yes, it does.
Okay, so that's, that's where we're at, so, but all that has to wait until they do FEMA things. And I talked to Woker and Highwick, they're in the same boat with their firehouses, they're all sort of in the FEMA waiting category, 'cause they're all in the same boat with badly damaged buildings.
Was Skip able to help you with the paperwork, and make sure that...
So I never got to connect with Skip, but I did connect with this Terry guy finally. We met, he took all my paperwork, and he's fantastic, as I said, he just turned it all back to me. I've got four or five things I've gotta get him, but it looks like they're trying to get our cleanup and the emergency response done. The building, we gotta kinda drag our feet on until all that other stuff kinda works its way through. But we're ahead of most other towns, 'cause Highwick hasn't seen the insurance money, and Woker hasn't seen the insurance money, so we're ahead on that curve.
Nice job, Ben.
Yeah, we're, but it's been a little, I don't, I think a little short. It's been a frustrating, well, you see I'm calmer than the last meeting, and I had a lot longer, it's a frustrating process.
Yeah.
Been a frustrating process, yeah. Naturally, all I had was FEMA and all that and stuff, unless you have a question for something.
You guys doing otherwise, everything otherwise?
Well, I mean, we can talk about, real quick, if you've got just a minute, is the, the level of violence and mental health problems and drug problem we're dealing with seems to keep increasing, you know, we've had three, three fatalities in the last three weeks.
Oh, really?
One person froze to death, we've had a stabbing, and someone got beat up and then stole a car.
Here in Woodbury, in Kansas?
Yeah.
Oh, really? I haven't heard of any of those.
Someone froze to death at the Greenwood Lake Dry Hydrant, we found him, he was almost dead when I found him, and he died in the ambulance, we were trying to work on him, so...
Oh, dear.
Local resident.
Local people?
Resident.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's the stuff that's going on, so our, our demand for service keeps going up, and the, the difficulty of the calls we're dealing with keeps going up, we're, we're having the issue with the drug and gang violence, they're coming up and just shooting people, which we had already, and that's kind of what we're seeing, and that's kind of escalated to people getting beat up on the side of the road, and we had one fellow we found beat up in the ditch, he didn't remember how he got beat up in the ditch, and he had broken bones, and this is what we're dealing with, I've never seen anything like it, so I don't know what to tell you on that, just making you aware that that's what's going on. So we're having to be kinda careful about, you know, we had...
And nothing's getting reported on the news or anything, you're not hearing anything.
Do you have police backup for some of this stuff?
No, no, we have no...
Really?
I had to deal with two times, one, the, the shooting victim, we had, drove into Debra Rose's driveway at midnight or something, and I ended up having to go there, 'cause poor Debs in the driveway with two gang members, really not very nice people, and I had to deal with that situation. One was shot, the other was aren't talking, but these are dangerous people, and, but no police, and we put him in the ambulance, and off we go, and then I had to go to another person's house where the individuals, there was two individuals from somewhere else that were banging on their door, and the person was inside freaking out on the phone with 911, I responded up to the building with the rescue truck lights and siren, pretending we had a medical call. They got in my face, asked me why I was there, and I said, "Are you having a medical emergency?" "'Cause if you're not, then I need to deal with the one that is here." And they said, "Can you please, I said, "Can you please move out of my way?" They were right in my face, and then just said, "Screw this," and it wasn't very nice, and they got in the car and drove away. But that's how we diffused it, 'cause the police went into the individual's house, they're like, "Well, we're not coming," the police, like, "We're not coming," so, "You better hurry yourself," is all they could tell you, the poor lady was terrified, and I was at that stage, all I could think of to do was, "Oh, let's go pretend there's a medical call," and that kinda shoot them off, but that's kinda the stuff that's going on.
That's quick thinking, thank you for that.
Yeah, it's all we could do, I mean, I didn't know what else to do, I pulled in license, and I brought, brought someone that didn't look very threatening, you know, so this, I just told, "Hey, we must," I was told there was an EMS call here, "Are you having an EMS emergency?" "No, get out of my way, please." That's what I, I don't know what else to do, it's just kind of the circumstances, ran, you can't, I know, this is where we're always in a tough position, where, 'cause, you know, we're finding people that are in car accidents, I had one lady with a... this is where we're always in a tough position where, because, you know, we're finding people that are in car accidents. I had one lady with a hundred bags of heroin in her pocket, uncapped needles. You know, we gotta be careful with open bag, open foil packs, so really encouraging people not to stick their fingers into people's pockets or when you're doing EMS care. Just be so careful because if you stick in, you'll have a jab.
So you find something like that and the police won't come?
Yeah. Absolutely not.
Do you send these people away?
Well, even when they arrest people, they just get a summons.
Well, I know, but you know.
This is a good cop. He arrested, he went to Hardwick to arrest people from the car accident and he got was back in like fifteen minutes. I said, where, where is the person? You got them all cuffed up? No, they got their summons. One individual, we had three days in a row involved in three motor vehicle crashes and got arrested each day.
Too hard.
So.
Wow.
Driver, then there was a passenger, then there was a passenger.
Oh.
Yeah.
The parking lot.
Your parking lot's loaded. I've done a couple, three overdoses there. You've been there for a few.
It's starting to back up and it's not local people that are in the passenger seats. It's, it's, um.
The water tub in the Gulf is a lost.
What I would do with things at the town, you guys don't need to do, but like, I must walk up to the cars, bang on the window. I just, someone right over here by the old dam, right over here, someone called, thought someone was overdosing. I pulled up, got out and they're in there shooting up. And I said, get, get out of here. Just pack your crap and they just drove away. So that's what I would do. Just tell them to leave.
But you ladies don't do that?
No.
Oh, no, there, I sat there and waited. It was a drug deal. And then I ended up taking off, going back to, taking a picture of the car. And I knew who was in the driver's seat, but, yeah, and we're at our max for police patrol, so that five thousand needs to get up.
But we had, we had to.
We have a constable.
We don't.
We don't have one.
What was it?
He had no training.
A constable has to have police training.
Police training.
And a lot of the stuff, he has to have a police officer with him.
Yeah.
So he thinks it was.
So we're walking, we're just walking a fine line, you know, because what's happened, like, we had a one day two overdosed, there was three overdoses. I did the one in the morning. We found a dead person in the afternoon and while we were dealing with that one is when the other person came in, so it was like bang, 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 just like that. And then the next day we found the guy frozen dead. So that's just the way it goes. There's bad batches of drugs that come through town and that's what we're dealing with, so. And so we're watching out for everybody's mental health, too, because that gets tough to deal with. So we're getting, dealing with that, too, so. There's a lot going on. So I'm just making you aware. Be careful.
No, we appreciate it.
And thanks for dealing with it.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. And that's kind of what I wanted you to bring up, so thank you. Without being prompted, you did exactly what I was hoping.
Because it's been getting a lot more intense lately. And some of it's really sad because we had one fellow die that I think just started doing heroin two months ago and ended up overdosing. He laughs at stuff, it's just something you do.
Yeah, it's all tragic.
Yeah, it's just bad, bad business.
It's all tragic.
And it's just the continuous nature of it. It's like here's the same catalog of people. Same group of people beating each other up, the same group, just over and over and over again. That's what we're dealing with. Yay.
No fires, though?
Uh, no. Well, we've been to other people's fires. I don't like to jinx ourselves. It's not our turn. The, we had a flooded apartment house in Callas yesterday. Someone let the water pipe split.
No.
Ran from the third floor for two and a half days, so they that was a fun phone call to me. And I found out that the Red Cross won't help individual from an apartment, so the poor lady, when the kid had no housing. So I was like, we don't have to, it has to be, I was like, okay, well. That's what you got. So that's it. That's what I got for reports so far, unless you get any more questions.
Nope, thank you, Paul. We appreciate that.
And I'll get out of here and we'll move on.
Thank you.
All right, Paul, thank you for all your work. We really do appreciate it.
The pre-town meeting is Thursday night at six thirty?
Six.
Six o'clock.
In the gym.
In the gym.
See y'all there.
There's also a pre, pre, pre-town meeting.
Pre, pre. Okay.
Yeah.
No shooting and yelling?
Talking, laughing, sharing stories.
Five o'clock, is it five o'clock, is it?
Five to five forty-five.
Okay, I'll try to make that one. I should be for a little bit.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you, Paul.
Have a good night.
Take good care, please.
Don't worry.
Uh, just to follow up on what Paul said, though, Ms. Brandy also brought it up. I think it's worth consideration for us to consider upping our amount of Washington County Patrol. That's gonna cost us.
But they don't even have.
They, they've maxed out.
If you look on your financial statement, they're at like four thousand something.
Really?
They basically maxed out.
That'll be enough time to come back for an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it needs to be.
Especially based on Paul's comments and the things that I have heard anecdotally, which I think are mostly confirmed by Paul's comments. I think that that's something that we need to consider.
Look, with Washington County deal with this stuff, they don't intend to do that enforcement.
They don't like to.
Uh, they don't, but in the absence of VSP, it's our, and we, without an agreement with Hardwick, which we do not have. This is our next best option, I'm afraid.
And I know we tried out the once before and the Washington County Sheriff's Department didn't, told us that they didn't have the manpower
That's correct.
to meet that.
So they didn't even use the extra, in some years they don't even use the five thousand, but I thought it depends on whether they have the staff and we don't know that.
So, anyway.
Right now.
I, I think it's, this is something that we have to pursue.
Yeah.
So.
So this, Paul?
Yes, please, Monty Shannon.
Something like that, can you dictate the hours that they patrol?
We can. We typically have done it as like a lump sum for, this is the expected amount of, of money that we can give you. Please use this total amount. We've never been very specific about when, when they're here. At least with the Washington County Sheriff's Office, they're typically just patrol. So they're mostly doing traffic stops. We have had a very difficult time interacting with Hardwick police because they're very understaffed as well as Hardwick Rescue. And I think that Paul would equity that. My wife is on Hardwick Rescue and they're always on, but VSP is our next sort of avenue and they only come up here for very specific reasons. So your point's very well made. We kind of turned away from VSP just because they simply weren't helping us and sort of went towards Washington County. But you're right, we kind of need to start this over again. It's been a year.
We can't get a contract with the state police.
We can't get a contract with the state police. No, they are on call. So Washington County seems to be our best bet. If Hardwick was willing to work with us, if they weren't so understaffed, that would obviously, that'd be our best option. But, you know, they're over to Walkeet and they're, they're kind of, they're kind of all over the place and they just yeah, we just don't have enough police presence. So having a police car, having a Washington County Sheriff's Office car that even cruises through on somewhat of a regular basis or hangs out at the town office sometimes, especially in the evenings. Um, you know, but we could make those specificities if they're willing to work with us. So far, sir, it hasn't been that easy, I'm afraid, but your point's very well made. Stephen.
I wonder, I wonder if you've ever considered or heard about intermunicipal police department. It was similar, the fire department, we serve part of Callas. I wonder if, you know, potentially Cabot, Callas, Woodbury being adjoining town could have one or two cruisers. Maybe we could share space with, I don't know, if our emergent, new emergency center or maybe at Hardwick. I wonder if there's a different way to think about this. We're not, it seems like we don't have access to police service. I wonder if we can work with other towns to form one.
It sounds like a really good idea. We've never budgeted for it and we don't have the space at the moment. Policing is expensive.
Yeah.
Which is why we typically have taken advantage of our county, our county sheriff's office to have our own municipal service. You know, even when our fire service is volunteer and it's, it's rather expensive. And the taxpayers are not always thrilled about how much we have to pay for our fire and emergency crews. So to add something on to that is a, is a, is a conversation that we can certainly have. We've never pursued it, but it's a great concept, Stephen. Thank you. Something I can try to look into. I'm happy to.
Michael, you were on the board when there was a whole big, went over everything a few years ago. I don't know if you were.
Turned over every stone that we could think of about police.
We tried really hard.
And it sounds like you guys went through the same process and came to the same.
Same conclusion, unfortunately.
It's too bad that Hardwick is, I mean, we were really close to signing along one time and then they lost a number of folks and that was the end of that.
And that fell apart.
Yeah.
But.
I can tell you, there's a lot of residents that are very frustrated and, and are beside themselves with all the drugs and the crap that's going on. They may be more receptive to spending more tax dollars on something like that.
It's a, it's a good point to make. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, it's something for a town meeting conversation.
Yeah.
It's a perfect, perfect town meeting conversation. It's gonna be frustrating, but it's time for it. Okay, we've belabored the fire department's report in a different direction and I'm sorry for that, to take it off of our intended path there, but we're just about on time. Alfred, would you please give us the road commissioner's report? Thank you, Ms. Lurie.
Uh, yeah, so it's, we're approaching our second or third mud season. It's here. We are now down a man. Joe's day, last day was last Friday. I've got a couple of potential, one full, one, one person that's interested in full time and one has part time.
And the ad has gone now?
Yes.
Great.
Yeah, that's how the one person.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lurie. Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Lurie.
So we have to wait until the eighth is what the ad says.
Right.
Before.
Thank you for advancing that.
Time to put their ad in. So hopefully we get more options. But we have to wait for that.
Yeah, we had to give it enough of a window so that we had an applicant pool, so I'm sorry for, we tried to shorten it up as much as we could.
Right.
But we need to give it at least a window so that people could see it in multiple postings.
Right. Yeah, no, I totally get this takes time. I've done a lot of it.
I know, and I apologize for the, for the delay.
Does the one applicant you got seem like a good option for the full time?
Yes.
Cool.
That's good to know.
Yeah, he's one that has applied in the past, but we didn't have, we weren't offering what he was looking for at that time. But now we do, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so stay tuned on that, I guess. Other than that, we've just been fighting the battles with what we've got. Trucks seem to be holding up fairly well. There's been, there's always an issue. Every time we go out, there's some little thing we gotta think around and fix. Uh, we budgeted for a new sand screen. And it's time to do that. So.
I think you guys got this, um, I emailed and I made some copies and I don't remember what I did with them, but I guess I left them while my dad.
I, I did see you.
Here's a copy.
I did, I did see you.
Yeah.
I don't think we have a choice.
I, I don't either. I think that, you know, we gotta do what we gotta do. It's something we gotta have. And I did, incidentally, I have three quotes. One, the one that you have in front of you, which I don't have a paper copy of, but that's the one I'm gonna recommend. It's the cheapest and I was able to somewhat be part of the design factor. With this, with this contractor.
Michael, you can hand that to Alfred. You can have my copy. I got more somewhere.
Mr. Lurie, do you think that that's something that you would be able to repair? I mean, sand screens just go down hard.
Yes.
Does it feel like, like you, you have a lantern torch that could, could make that last? I know, you've been cobbling together the one that we have. It's a long time. So do you feel like that's a design, since you were, had input in it, that we could have?
Yes.
Beyond it's, we would consider it's normal life?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that makes a difference to me.
This is gonna be a lot stronger than the one we have.
Yeah.
Uh, it's also bigger. So it's wider, so right now the loader has just barely like two inches or three inches on the side. So every time you're going in, you're pushing out, the loader is pushing out, you know, so it's putting extra stress on it because of the size of it. So with this being wider, I think it's gonna, it's gonna have less stress and it's gonna be more useful for us.
Awesome.
Is it gonna be built on our site?
No, it'll be built in his site. So part of this guy's quote is five hundred dollars for delivery. But that puts us over our eight thousand dollars.
Because of the delivery cost.
Because of the delivery cost. So I'm recommending or suggesting that we take our town truck with a trailer and go get it. It's in New York. It's maybe three hour drive, maybe four hour drive. And we get it ourselves. So you're paying one man to drive your truck for a day versus five hundred dollars.
Doesn't, doesn't matter.
Seems like the five hundred dollar, we should, we should just go ahead and pay the trucking cost. As opposed to.
Have it delivered, you think?
Have it delivered, as opposed to taking somebody offsite.
Point was getting.
It's not the point.
Oh, I apologize.
The point is more that it's over our.
So our purchasing policy states we have to have a contract.
Right.
With this, we have to go for bid over the eight thousand dollar threshold. So that's where.
But if the, we can consider the shipping costs separately from the thing itself.
There still should be a contract.
Well, we've got a.
That's not a contract.
It's not a contract.
When BLCT says, when you're paying out for your ten ninety nines, where's your contract that's over this threshold? When they come to the audit, which I'm up for audit right now, anybody who's outside services, who does not have a contract with us or in showing proof of insurance, that's a liability. Then we get penalized.
Isn't this a purchase as opposed to a contract?
The labor is, it's physical. I mean, there should be a contract.
It's not like we're bought, we're paying somebody to build it. We're buying the thing.
You are paying somebody to.
No, we're not.
He's building it. The gentleman that's doing it is welding it. He's building it.
But by the time we get there, it's built. We're not paying the money.
Built in his facility, so any, any risk is on his insurance because it's built there.
As our contract would sink that.
So.
So, so we can't do it as just a purchase?
Sure you can.
Well, I'm just.
You call BLCT then.
No, no, I, no, I'm, I'm.
I'm not referring, I just.
I'm just asking.
What kind of a contract?
We're, we're, we're buying, we're basically buying a piece of equipment, right? If I'm wrong, please correct me.
It's his design. It's his, it's his shop that's building it. He's purchasing the material that's gonna be built with. We are buying a finished product.
Okay.
No different than buying a truck from the Ford dealer.
That has a contract.
So why can't we turn this into a contract? Why, I mean, what's?
Exactly. That's what I'm saying.
But then it's over the price that, it's over the appropriate price? Because we're talking about.
We have a purchasing policy.
Right, no, I understand. That's what I'm asking.
So that's, we're supposed to be sticking to rules or sticking to.
And I completely agree that we should be sticking to our.
Well, we've had this conversation before and Alfie said, well, if I go out and buy ten thousand dollars worth of culverts, do I have to comply with the purchasing policy? And I think at the time we said no.
Well, that's because of the emergency.
I think that was a different circumstance.
No, 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 it was, no, that was just a general conversation.
Does the fact that it's budgeted have anything to do with this?
No.
I mean, you've put, you've put ten thousand dollars into a line item for this purchase.
That's correct.
And you've put me in responsible of that budget.
That's correct.
I have done my due diligence. I've got three quotes sitting in front of me. I, I don't know what else I can do other than turn this, this, we can choose, choose our provider and have him put it into a contract, whatever this contract needs to be. I'm sure he'll be happy to write it up.
Ms. Brandy, how do we make this work? As opposed to having them go.
The differences of a contract versus.
I'm the one that has to answer to BLCT during the audit, so.
So I'm just asking to.
So now I can just. So now I can just, for me, instead of doing audits, it can be you guys doing the audits and send me going, where's the contract? The select board should be giving a contract.
Okay.
But usually a contract is contract for services.
I would suggest calling BLCT and trying to clear up the question rather than, you know.
Ideally, ideally, how would we, how would we go about this? To make it as straightforward as possible?
You would do a contract.
Okay, and.
Play it out. We are not responsible for.
How would we do a contract? That's the question.
Yeah, so how do you want us to write that contract?
Well, typically, the clerk or somebody on the select board will, BLCT has documents on, online for sample, for contracts that state how it should be worded. Make sure they're, they have insurance, they have and show proof of insurance. The liability, so the liability is off us.
Well, yes, for sure. That's the same as hiring the excavator to fix our roads. He has to show us proof of insurance.
Right.
That, that puts BLCT off our back, because we've proven that our contractor has insurance. Right? Isn't that, it seems like that's what, that's what the contract is gonna provide. Proof that the town woodbury is off the hook for liability.
Right, if there's a contract.
But what's the liability? I mean, it's a thing. You know, if we get the thing, if we buy it and it breaks, it's ours. And if it kills somebody, it's our responsibility, but by that time, it's not, we're done. You know, by that time, it's.
I think the easiest thing here is to, I've already asked him to lower his price five dollars below five, uh, eight thousand. That clears us from that. I take the town truck down and pick the thing up, and we're under the eight thousand dollar mark. Contract goes away. There's no liability, other than our vehicle driving over the road, which is covered by insurance anyways. We have our, our tool before our deadline, which is fast approaching, till I want.
Till I want.
This is not something that just came up. We've been working on this for months, for months.
What are your two other quotes?
Uh, I've got one here from a very local guy. Fourteen thousand, six seventy-four.
Be gracious.
Almost double. And then I've got another one here from Nash Equipment. Uh, they don't make them. They, somebody, some other fabricator makes them and then sells them to these guys, ninety-eight hundred. So both are more than this fellow that I have found, and I was able to be part of the design, because I know what works. I, I mean, I've used these, these things for twenty-five years. I know what works. The angle's gotta be right. You know, I asked them to put the, on the grizzly itself, I asked them to put half-inch steel in.
Still on the sliding, yep.
So that when you dump the sand over, it kinda cuts it as it runs down onto the, and breaks up the chunks better.
Well, it sounds like the right design.
It's cheaper.
It's the right design for less money.
Do you get warranties with any of these?
I didn't go there. I didn't ask that, but it's, it's steel, so, um.
I'd be really surprised.
I would be really surprised.
Just ask him.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's one of those things that is gonna get a warranty. But we've got a welder and torch, and we've got access to steel if we need it. Um, but this thing is built rugged. It's not going to fail.
So you go out there and get it, miles on the vehicle, you're looking between eight hundred and a thousand miles to go out there and get it, bring it back?
Uh, I'm not really sure of that. I haven't done that calculation.
The biggest thing is he wants half upfront, and I want a contract.
What would the contract say?
Well, if I'm giving you forty-five hundred dollars, I want a contract that I'm actually gonna get the ending piece.
Okay, yeah. So that's all the contract needs to say, is that I'll give you this?
There's more specs. There's specs. BLCT, all you have to do is go on and look at the links. You just put in this design, this is what you want, we need the insurance. It's, it's not like this is something new.
Okay.
So can we find this contract and, and establish it? I mean, it seems like that's the hang-up. Why can't we find this contract and, and get it replaced?
Well, that's what she's indicating, that we can go on the BLCT site.
So it's, it's on the select board to do that, and I'm sorry. I, I will.
But when you're handing over that much money to somebody that's in war, there should be a contract.
This is not just a fly-by-night company. I'm sorry.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying to, for coverage, if I'm handing, writing a check out for half, there should be a contract.
And I will just go ahead and look at the website.
Okay.
On the contract. Can I steal that back? I'll send you some tomorrow.
Great.
If the board is willing to go ahead with this offer, which seems like it is designed correctly based on the road commissioner and is the, is the best price. Are we willing to support that?
I support it. It makes sense to me.
Good.
Yep, yeah.
Then I will find a way to write the contract up. Shouldn't take too long, right, Ms. Brandy? Because I can just find everything and put in the information, talk to these people, and get it all squared away.
BLCT standards are in there.
Yep, sounds great. I will do it. And then I'll get you something, and then we can follow through. Does that sound fair enough?
Yes.
Right, let's do that. Anything else that you wanted to bring up, Mr. Larry, as part of the town road commissioner's report?
Uh, unless there are questions, I'll do my best with questions, but uh, we're gonna be going through some tough times here with the roads in the next month.
And you're short.
And I'm shorthanded.
Did you end up getting your, your gravel piles replenished?
I got some, yes. Yeah. Uh, last fall, I hustled out some. I got a little bit of a stash. Uh, assuming that there'll be pits opening up soon, because all the towns are gonna be in the same.
They're in the same position, yeah, exactly, same position. Everybody's had a funny mud season.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's been a little bit tricky to be able to haul, because you gotta, you gotta have chains on the trucks. So you take your chains off and put them back on, you know, so it's a lot. And if it's only one day of hauling, it's really not worth.
Taking everything down.
Three hours it takes to, to, you know.
Taking the chains off the trucks.
So, once we get a longer stretch of decent leather, we'll be, we'll be doing that, taking the chains off and hauling material, either to the shop or to the roads.
I have a follow-up. Um, so I just noticed on the, um, going over the timesheets, we're still using the old ones, but I think we're good to go, right, with the new timesheets? Could we get a bunch printed out and get them on to you guys?
Brandy, or somebody at the office printed them, so I received them today.
Oh, perfect.
So next week, you will be seeing them.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Just wondering if the select board, in, in regards to last Monday, if they put anything into place for the town crew to get out in a more timely manner during storms?
We had a conversation about it, um.
I know, I appreciate you guys getting back to me. I was just sort of wondering if anything's been done? If you're gonna do anything?
Are you referring, referring to a specific event, or?
Last Monday, to be exact, but there's been others where it doesn't seem like the town crew, not to put it on further, but the town crew aren't getting out in a very timely manner. Monday, we had five inches of snow, and you could go in any direction, and every other town was out plowing and sanding, and it was gone by ten o'clock, and our crew didn't get in until ten o'clock.
We haven't addressed any specific events specifically?
Well, we did. You weren't with us, but Alfie, Diana, and I talked about it.
It was a holiday, and it was a surprise storm. They weren't talking any sort of weather in, in the forecast. And it all of a sudden dropped at three o'clock in the morning. It dropped, uh, four or five inches of snow. And so thinking that it was a holiday, the buses weren't running.
Right.
So I didn't, I didn't put a lot of energy into it. And I agree, I should, we should have been out there regardless of the buses.
Well, you did not know that it was a school, even though it was a holiday, it was easy to assume that school would be closed, but it wasn't. And you didn't know that.
That's right.
Don't you have a school calendar over to the garage?
I do now, but I did not. I've had zero communication with the school as far as the calendar, the bus garages, where, I don't even know where the buses run, other than seeing them out there. I did contact the, the principal, and she has sent me, now sent me the calendar, so I have that now, but prior, I haven't. I don't know, does it come to the office? And it's just not coming to me, or, I don't know.
But that's kind of a moot point, really. I mean, you, you may have been visiting the office, you know, you don't get holidays, and you don't get weekends. From October to April, you guys, with the snow, you gotta be out there. But what if we had an incident where the rescue squad had to go somewhere and couldn't get there?
Rescue squad's got chains and they've got tires.
That's not the point.
It's not the point, Monty, but we're doing the best we can. You wanna come drive a truck, come on over.
Don't miss out on me.
Okay, um, we will address it?
It needs to be addressed.
Okay, fair enough.
My other question is, in lieu of what, um, the conversation about all the drugs and all the, is there a reason why the town garage gate isn't closed at the end of the day and on weekends? With all the thievery, stealing going on in this town? It's terrible.
We have cameras that are, that are watching the whole yard. I can sit in my office and see the whole yard. It is track to track. And it's a rather inconvenience to move the gate twice a day. One time, we're coming in at two or three in the morning. It's, it's dark, it's, you know, we wanna get in the truck and go do our job. The gate is not gonna stop these drug people from coming in and out of that yard.
There's cameras with it, Alfred.
Well, that's right. So, does, is there, is there a gate down at the town office? They could break into the town office just as well as they could do anything in our town.
That's a whole different scenario.
Oh, is it?
Anyway. I would like to see that gate shut when it's there. I mean, it makes sense.
We will, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a point, it's a point that we can discuss, but.
Why have a gate there then?
We need a better gate that's not so hard to open and shut?
There's nothing wrong with the gate. The gate works. It's just, you gotta get out of your truck, at the road, open the gate, get back in your truck. It's just, it's an inconvenience. If it's that big a deal, we'll do it, but just taking time from the, from our job.
Okay.
And for very little benefit. It's just not gonna benefit much.
All right.
Like I said, they're gonna walk around the gate, and they're gonna go do their, their thieving, whatever they're gonna do. If there is, everything's locked up. There's nothing really that they can, they can get to. I mean, I guess they could slash the grader tires or something crazy. Who knows what they're gonna do, but that's not gonna stop by any gate.
Fair enough. Thank you for answering the public comment. Appreciate that. Alfred, thank you for responding. I greatly appreciate it. Uh, and thank you for all the work. We do appreciate it. Roads are in pretty good shape as far as I am.
Yeah, I, I think they are.
Yeah, so, so thank you, especially on a short crew. Any other comments we would like to make? Otherwise, we'll switch over. All right, thanks, sir. So, um, we're pushing a little, but the local hazard mitigation plan, the LHMP, we have to appoint committee to prepare the plan, update, review grant agreement paperwork, and determine who should be signing it.
So I can start with this, and John is here also.
John, they've written in.
So, um, we met, and by we, John, myself, Jim Schlighthelm, and Norman Eckman met last week. Um, just to get things started with this, um, but those are the four people, um, who, um, so far should be appointed to the committee. And we talked about, it would be really nice to have somebody from the fire department to be a part of this, as they basically are, are emergency, um, rescue, et cetera, people. So we're, you know, and there's, you know, I think we have the four to get things started. We really can't do anything until this agreement paperwork has been signed and, um, by a number of the select board, and then has to be sent back and, and signed by them, and that's when they start ticking the calendar. Because a big part of, um, the town's match for the grant is gonna be in kind, so anything, like, we could have clocked up the meeting that we did last week. I could have clocked up the time I spent with Brandy to get the DPS survey and stuff. But, um, we can't do that until the paperwork has been signed. That's when they start the clock.
Okay, so are we, are we at a final draft of the paperwork?
Oh, yeah, they sent us the paperwork. Um, I have a copy here. Diana, you, did you, were you gonna bring one?
No, I don't think I printed it out yet.
Okay, because I, I, I have no.
You don't think you could, we could just have you be the signer?
Well, um, we talked about that at our meeting, and I'm not really certain who. I think it would be best for this, I am the contact person, you know, I've been on, and I'm listed there. But we could have, I mean, it would be, if the select board could authorize who that would be, you know, and if John is our original natural director, I don't feel the most sense that he be that person. So this is just for the, um, so that would be up to the select board. But we're, we'll be getting, um, nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars, I think, and then the town match is three thousand or something or other. Can't remember the numbers exactly, um, and, uh, you know, the bulk of, I'm hoping that the bulk of what, um, the town match will be, um, will be in kind. So we're gonna need to track any bit of work, kinda like FEMA. I mean, this is a FEMA thing, sort of. Without this, we could get FEMA funding for emergencies, so we're gonna wanna be tracking our time.
We haven't budgeted any match. We haven't budgeted for any.
That's why, that's why I would like to have it be in kind with your welcome volunteers who won't get paid, but can charge an hourly rate for their time. So, and I, I'm not certain that we'll use all of that money. Um, I don't think we'll need to use that much. Um, we will have to, we have an RFP that we went over that we will, um, again, we can't really send it out until the agreement is signed, um, so.
So you think you'll hire somebody to work with you, or your team can't do it?
We need, um, I mean, Norman has quite a good expertise. I have none. Um, I'll let John speak for.
I'm just a warm body.
Yeah. And Jim Schlighthelm is interested. He's also a warm body. I mean, I'm basically a warm body too, but, um, uh, but we do need someone who is aware of what the, you know, FEMA statutes are. I mean, this thing has to be approved by FEMA, so, um, in the, the past two rounds, um, it has always been the Central Mountain Planning Commission that has been our consultant, but there are other consultants available. You know, we'll have to put this out, um, by the town's, um, procurement policy, so it will go out to, to bid as it did last time. So I didn't print out, I printed out everything that was kind of specific for this agreement, and then there's, you know, another ten pages of uh, the usual government, um, kind of stuff, which is in pretty much every contract.
So is this the one that has to be signed? So this is Chris's last meeting.
Yeah.
So if we.
The select board can authorize somebody to sign it, or they can sign it themselves, and then we could go from there.
Well, I think it makes sense to have somebody sign it who's knows a little bit more about what's going on. I mean, I'm not even a warm body. I'm more like a cool. And, um, if we could authorize you to be the signer, that would make more sense, because there's probably gonna be other stuff along the way that needs to be signed.
Well, yeah, there'll be lots of other stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm, I'm fine with that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
Well, I guess I'd make a motion then that we let Michael be the signer for the town for the purposes of this Vermont Department of Public Safety Grant Agreement Award.
I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chris didn't leave, did he?
He asked me to chair.
He asked me to chair, so I guess that, I don't know, maybe he just.
Sometimes he goes out and makes a phone call or something.
Okay, well, he might, I don't know, he didn't say.
He took his stuff?
Um, yep, here I am. Um, do we also need to approve, appoint a committee? Do we need to do that right now?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Chris is back.
Okay.
And then maybe, and probably will be other, um, people that will be asking the select board to appoint them.
Well, I guess I'd make the motion that we appoint Michael Gray, Jim Schweithelm, John Gordon, and Norman Edkin to be the, uh, LHMP, uh, team.
I'll second that motion. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Call.
But when you were, um...
But we have to, we have to actually review the paperwork.
Well, we did.
Oh, we do.
Yeah.
So, we have a performance.
So, anyways, we decided that it would make sense for Michael to be the signer, because he's gonna be, you know, the one who knows what's going on. And since this is your last meeting, we could have you sign it, but that's kind of meaningless.
Well, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
You should be a friend.
It's not meaningless.
Let's be honest.
Well, it's a signature. So, I don't know if you heard this, Barbara, Michael explained that most of the town match will be provided by their in kind.
By in kind, yeah.
We don't have anything budgeted for that.
We had looked at this in the past.
Yeah.
We, we had looked at this in the past.
Well, it's, that's the actual.
But this is the actual form.
Yeah, it's the actual agreement.
Okay.
So, what I will do is send a copy of this meeting's minutes with this, so that they understand that I've been authorized to be the.
To be the signer.
Signer, yeah. Okay.
Makes the most sense.
Right.
Alright.
John, oh, John's got his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, John, please.
It's subtle related, but been going back and forth with, uh, Brian McWalters of the state regarding, uh, Flood Resilient Communities Fund. Um, Jake Shadick is interested in pursuing an application for a buyout for his property, so we're trying to get the bits and bobs lined up, and I'll be bringing that stuff to the, to the board once we have about a little bit further along. So, basically, we'd be completing an application for the funds, and then the town would potentially, if the town is interested, would potentially purchase the property using the funds from the grant.
To do the buyout.
Yeah, so, that's just kinda going on, but once I get a little bit more pieces together, we'll.
So, they have to have this town agree to take the property ownership?
Yes, right, yeah. Take and maintain and green space and all that sort of good stuff, and so, basically, we'll work together and put the application in, and if they provide, if they agree with it, if the application, they provide the money for the.
For the buyout.
For the buyout.
Yeah.
And that money would include tearing, tearing it down and?
Yes.
Yeah.
And on a similar note, um, it's a similar, um, agency that John was just talking about, um, as one of the planning commission's, um, sort of projects that we discussed with UI2E of the Central for Mountain Plan Commission is having, um, um, someone take a look at the stream as it comes down to Ron Rothburn's, down through and under Route fourteen. There, um, I've been in contact with Stephanie Smith from the Vermont Emergency Management, and there is a fund, um, it's called the Flood, uh, Community Flood Resiliency Fund, um, which is getting another pretty heavy dose of, um, funding.
Of federal money.
Yeah, yeah.
Heard that in the meeting two years ago.
This coming summer, um, to, um, I talked to her, and the planning commission has talked about having someone take a look at the stream bed, um, and to see if there is some kind of flooding mitigation that could be done to the stream to help keep the village from flooding. Um, and Stephanie suggested that I get ahold of Jared Board, uh, one of our district's, uh, stream guy, have him take a look at it and, um, either come up with a, a suggestion or a design, um, that, um, the town could, um, apply to this fund for some street mitigation work.
I wondered also whether it sounded like, when they talk about mitigation, Skip's not here, but those two bridges, if they could be mitigated above what FEMA is willing to approve, um.
Bridges.
The, the two bridges that we have to replace.
Oh, yeah, I don't know anything about that.
So, um, I think it's possible to just replace them as they were. That would be the FEMA project, but FEMA would also like it. Maybe if we could get money to make it better, make them better, so that less likely that they would get blown out the next time.
That also, I mean, it's, that sounds wonderful, um, and while we're, while we're printing money, um, you know, we do live in a high level flood plain in the center of town, and we're having warmer, longer, wetter seasons. Um, I'm afraid that some of these issues with mitigation are longer term problems than.
Yeah, this is not something that'll happen this summer.
It's not gonna happen this summer. So, if we're thinking about this as a long term, I think that's awesome, but, um, let's be honest about the fact that if we're going to do flood mitigation of hazards in the village, we're talking about a decade, a decade project.
Yeah.
Not a, not a year project. Um, there's a lot to this. We're, but the center of town is built on three different stream systems.
Mm-hmm.
But junction in town.
The reason I wanted to share this with the select board is just to get a sense of whether, um, we should, the planning commission, um, should kind of pursue at least finding, having Jared come, get an idea of this, if this is something that's a possibility, um, and then what we might be able to do for funding for it, or, um, you know, if you don't want us to pursue it, or if the town isn't interested, then, you know, we won't do that.
Well, I'm, I'm outgoing on the select board, but I'll speak up and say that I think it would be great to get that perspective.
And I would support you guys, um, doing that, yeah.
Getting a perspective would be really great.
So, once, um, Jake's buyout happens.
Doesn't commit us to it.
That, I mean, that section of stream is really what's left to be repaired.
Well, you know, I know that Ronnie Rothburn, um, you know, his, behind his garage and his house, that bank really took a beating, um, so I would ask, I'm gonna be asking Jared to look. There, it doesn't seem to me that there's anything that we can do until it actually comes right into the village. I mean, it's ledge, it's really kind of channeled all the way up from, from the top of the hill, um, but Jared has worked on that bank when we had a, uh, that emergency washout with another flooding incident a few years ago, um, and that repair seems to have held up. As I, I would want him to look at, you know, pretty much this, uh, the Buck Lake Brook as it enters into the village behind Ronnie Rothburn's, and I know that the, that Ronnie, and I think Chuck was involved, they were doing some work to kind of build up that stream bed, and then some stake guy told them to get out of the stream.
Stop, yeah.
But, um, something needs to be done. Their water likes to go in a straight line, and right at Ron's place, it's taking a ninety degree turn, so it's gonna work into that bank as much as it can, and, you know, his house, his garage could.
He did build a, build a wall.
Yep.
And I'm, Jared's very familiar with that. Um, and hopefully that, because, yeah, it does hit the back of his garage there, and the last flood sort of undermined the, uh, his foundation, but then, uh, they built that cement wall.
It's a short term fix.
I also have heard that D-Trans, they couldn't get the size culvert that they wanted for the villagers, so they got a smaller one?
That's correct. Yep, so it's undersized.
Okay.
No kidding, already?
Yeah, it was.
It's, I mean, it's, it's already, the design is, is prone to fail.
Oh, really?
It's a channelized system, straight line, with two connecting brook systems. It'll be overwhelmed in the next major storm.
Geez.
It's, but it's not designed as a permanent fix, even though we threw a bunch of money at it.
Really?
Wow, sounds like the right response to me, because that was mine.
The time and the inconvenience that we all went through this.
Yeah.
Yep, it's drastically undersized for, for the capacity of high level flow.
Paul did say that the last, the last big green in December, that there was.
It was right up to the top.
It was right up to the top, and in fact, it actually did max the top.
Wow.
I have pictures of it.
So, with a flood like we had in July.
It will overtop again.
Again.
Yep. Well, we had to try.
Yeah.
And we didn't, you know, and it's better than what was there, but, uh, it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't fix a long term problem, so, alright. Michael, anything else that you would like to add?
That's it, I think.
That's great. Thank you very much for all the work. We appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Murphy, would you like to talk to us about town meeting prep?
Sure.
Sounds great.
Recently attended moderator training by Vermont League of Cities and Towns. It's an annual training done by Ed Chase. He's the longtime moderator of Westford. It's a good training. Um, I'm preparing myself personally, looking over Robert's rules and looking back at Woodbury Town meetings, and this Thursday, we have pre-town meeting forum, informational forum for the town meeting, and I'll volunteer to moderate that if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Yep.
Thank you.
And preceding that, at five o'clock, the library's hosting what we call Town Government Talk, and we had one last year, just prior to the informational meeting, and the Town Government Talk is to informally discuss experiences in town government, public service, ask questions, what do public officials do, how, what are the rules of order for, uh, town meeting. So, it's time for people to come together and just talk about public service. It's, be difficult work, yeah, and it's a time, I think, for people can come together and talk about the humanity of it, so, the hardship, the humor, and the hardiness that it takes to sit in those chairs, so, thank you all here who are sitting in the chairs tonight. So, that's Thursday at five eight, five, pardon me.
Five P.
Five P. Yeah, it's gonna be a long talk, lots of talk, but, five P. M., Town Government Talk, forty-five minutes, and then six o'clock, the pre-town meeting forum, and, uh, that's where we can discuss the, uh, the items on the agenda for the town meeting, which is Saturday, March second, ten o'clock at school. Um, so, let's go to, I'm sorry?
I have a question for whom?
Did you let him finish?
Oh, sure, if he's finished, if he's not finished.
I have two items. One is, um, I don't know if anyone has notified our state representatives. We usually haven't come visit us on town meeting day. I don't know if they know that we've switched it, so, if no one has.
We have.
You have?
I have.
Okay, great. The other item is, um, Jim from HCTV called, and he asked about, um, the arrangements for town meeting, how the, uh, room is set up, you know, for purposes of recording it. So, I talked to him about it. I told him he should also talk to town clerk and select board, so, um, and I offered my opinion on something, and here, here it is, whether we should have microphones for, for the assembly, for the attendees at the meeting. In my opinion, we shouldn't, because I think it's a bit disruptive to the flow of the meeting. People, uh, maybe rise to stand and recognize they have something to stay, uh, say, and I think our room is not so big that people can't just talk and be heard. I know there's an occasion where someone doesn't have a voice that carries through the room, but in, in my last couple of meetings that I've moderated, if anyone, if, if I have, if I have a question, you know, whether someone can be heard, I will repeat it or ask if anyone needs that repeated. So, I think that's been an effective practice, and the microphones also may be intimidating to some people, and also can disrupt the flow of the meeting. So, that's my opinion on the microphones, um.
I think it's great when we have elementary school kids.
Yeah, I think.
I think it works perfectly, and thank you very much for that. That was fantastic.
The mock town meeting.
The mock town meeting was wonderful, but I think that you're correct, in my personal opinion, that it's nice to just have people stand and be recognized. Um, it takes the pressure off a little bit, and, and I think that that room works fairly well for people to, and, and you're very good at repeating or summarizing a point, so I think that we should stay with what we've had success with in the past.
I have been someone who's tried to speak and nobody could hear me, and you have summarized my point so that everybody could hear, so I think that worked fine.
And people could have been asked to speak up. I mean, you know, some people just get up and start talking, and they could put a little more oomph into it.
So, I, I agree.
Okay.
I think we all agree.
Yep.
Great, and if, if anyone there has trouble hearing, um, you know.
Well, that's, I, I mean, I disagree a little bit, because there are people that do have trouble hearing, and there are people that have very soft voices. I know Skip Lindsay has always, has a very soft voice, and it's always been hard for people to understand him, but I do understand the disruption in the flow. Um, somebody has to get the mic to the person. Um, we could have a couple of those energetic children that are there be mic runners. They would probably love doing that.
I don't think we have cordless mics.
No.
Well, we do. Why? Well, maybe, I don't know what we have. The school has a PA system, but I don't know how.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure the only one we've ever used is a corded mic.
Yeah.
I saw those corded.
Yeah, I had, so, yeah.
Although, many years ago, it might have been eight or ten, if that's many, um, I was at a meeting where there were cordless mics, and I, but I don't know who brought them.
That was before the, before the town, before the school had its own PA system. We used to hire somebody to come in.
I see.
We used to hire.
It was Gagnon's, I think, that would provide.
Gagnon's, and the other one was, um, Robin Grant at times came in, so, yeah, we hired people to bring in their systems.
But, um. Michael's points.
Yeah, I, I mean, just as long as everybody can hear, and if you have to repeat that, that works fine.
I'm gonna let Ms. Diana go and then recognize.
I know the school, um, school board members want to say something, and you had mentioned that either it could go on the warning, or they could request, obviously, there wasn't time to put it on the warning, but, but you're prepared for their request to fit it in somewhere? Do you have an idea where it would be good?
Sure, yes. They, they, they sent me an email. They told me they would potentially like to say some words about the school, so, in my opinion, they could speak during the report of the town officials. They are town officers listed in the report. They don't, they don't have a report, uh.
Right.
Published in the, in the town report, but they are town officers, so, I think that's one potential spot. Another is at the end under other business, non-binding business, and a third option would be, uh, by unanimous consent, or if we suspended the rules similarly, like we do when the legislators come, we find a logical point maybe between articles where they're recognized to speak.
It seems like it would be a good thing to slot them in before we talk about the rest of the money issues, like maybe after the elections and before the budgets, I don't know. Wait till the end. I don't know how many people will be hanging around.
Right.
You're gonna think about that.
The, um, I think it's our article two.
Article two.
The report, to hear the reports of town officers.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that'd be a good spot for it.
Seems like a suitable spot there.
I agree. I agree.
To consider, except now it's just to consider the printed report of the town officers. Anyways.
I think it could still...
They are listed in the report.
They are listed in the report.
Oh, definitely, yeah. Okay, but you wanted to change it to not to say, "hear the report," but to say the printed report.
The point, the point is, I think that there's a good spot for it. And I think that that's a great spot.
Sure. And I'd like to clarify one thing. What I talked about a month or a month and a half ago was not making it a question, what shall the town do with regard to the report? Yeah. And as VLCT recommended, not to state it as a question.
Right.
But to state it as we do now, to hear the report. Yeah.
And I think it's fine for us to use that opportunity to allow them, as officers, to speak.
Great. I agree.
Okay, well, good.
Although, I must say, I just need to say, I am only the moderator through and up until Article 1. I am, my term expires there. So that, that being said, there...
Don't say you're not running.
No.
She doesn't get to run.
I can't speak beyond Article 1, because that's where my term expires, that's where my term expires.
All right, you might expect, you might expect to be nominated.
Okay, okay, I'll be ready.
John, I'm sorry, you have one.
I was just gonna speak to the sound.
Just please.
Because we were in the gym, what was it, a week and a half ago, for the Farmers' banquet, and, you know, some people's voices just don't carry, the acoustics in that room aren't very good, so regardless of how it's accommodated, whether it's expecting the, you know, the question to be repeated, and there's, you know, it's, there needs to be, some people's voices just don't carry. So that just has to be, like, Paul gets up there and he can go, and his voice can carry through, but, you know, if Cindy was saying anything...
He can carry through walls, actually.
Yeah. Or, you know, Steve Freihoff, or, you know, we had difficulty hearing him until we got the things working. So it's definitely saying, expecting, people can try to speak up, but some people, it just doesn't work particularly well. So just for what it's worth.
So maybe there could be an option. You know?
Well, we could have a mic, we could have a mic setup.
There are two mics.
Right, on both sides.
Two wa, two wired mics.
Two wired mics. So we could have that.
I get that there is some disruption to that, but, well, some people wouldn't be able to speak to them for themselves.
So we could have those set up, and it's people's option to take advantage of them.
Unplugging those refrigerators helped, too.
Yes. It does make a difference, the white noise, the black noise.
Do you have a microphone when you moderate, right? Or are you, no, you don't? Your voice just carries really well?
His voice works just fine for that.
Good job.
Especially halfway through the meeting, right?
Excuse me.
Because we did have the refrigerator freezer unplugged for bad impact, and, you know, it helps. But, you know, some people's, just their voice tone doesn't...
Doesn't go?
Doesn't go.
Now they can ever hear me, ever.
We're doing fine.
And older ears. Well, either, yes. And don't pick up all, all is equal.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Well, Stephen, thank you very much for everything.
Okay.
Appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it. And thanks again from Uptown Meeting. I know my kids, my kids really enjoyed it, so...
They'll really enjoy that.
I think Ron would probably enjoy it as well.
Yeah, great.
Okay. We have, what is nearing a final draft of the personnel policy.
And there was one remaining question for VLCT, and that was about how much vacation and/or sick leave can be accrued. And their wording from a previous review that they did was a little unclear, because it's, it made it sound like in both cases, you could, it said, "Note however that an employer is not allowed to limit the total number of hours of leave that an employee accrues over multiple years."
Yeah, it's too bad.
And that was, so anyways, the person I finally made contact with, Fred Sintink at VLCT, the person who was their expert in this area is not there anymore. They don't have any, yeah, they, they don't have someone to answer the specific question. He said it, it seems odd to him that it says that, because at VLCT, they have limits. You know, he knows that they, they have limits, and so it does seem like they're... Anyways, he strongly suggested that we get another legal review.
What?
Yeah, he said, he suggested that we...
We've done this, we've already done this twice.
Okay, well, okay.
For one...
Did we do a, run it by a lawyer, though, or...
We have made quite a few changes from...
Yes, we have, that's true.
He did suggest that the law has changed, so it might be a good idea to just run it by a lawyer. Again, I wouldn't run it by our, I don't think our regular attorney is a specialist, but he did give me the name of somebody who they work with, who is very familiar with things like this.
Diana, were you, I guess when I saw your email about that, I thought that you were talking about just running that one question by a lawyer, but are you talking about running the whole thing by a lawyer?
Well, I was, I was mostly concerned about the one question, because I think everything else has been vetted over and over. But that's, but I just wanted to pass on the advice from VLCT that because things have changed, and this has been going on for years now, it might be a good idea to just run it by this guy one more time. You know? I didn't ever did get clarification on the...
It sounds like they didn't answer your initial question either.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So I ju, I could just do that, and just find out what they think about that accumulation question.
Well, it's not ready to be signed tonight, so...
Yeah.
No matter what, it's gonna be up to the next board.
The, I did not get, the thing that was confusing to me was what you finally ended up with as far as the accumulation of annual leave.
Did you not see the, did you not see the document that I sent you on Friday?
I guess not. No.
Well, it doesn't sound like it.
No.
I don't think I saw anything from you, Chris, either.
No, Chris, just me.
But...
Yeah, when we, when we were at our special meeting on Tuesday, I said I'd send you something by Friday, and I did. Which included all, all that. Um, I'll sign it again, since we're back at this.
Yeah, well, what, this...
Because then, I mean, if we, if, if we have, if we can have all the amendments in there, and we feel reasonable about it, then we could have one more special meeting and sign it. Otherwise, it gets snuck on the next live board.
Right. I mean, we're so close, it doesn't feel like, whatever happens, it could be so fast. We just have one question, we just have to answer that and then sign it.
So would you ask the specific question of the attorney?
Okay, I will.
And then I will resend my additional comments, but what I would love to have is this version, then.
Okay. The, and this is the one I sent out to you after I finished with all of these...
So it hasn't changed, it hasn't changed since then?
So this is everything we talked about.
So it hasn't changed since then?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Well, it has, yeah.
Has it?
No, I mean, I just made her changes.
Okay, then.
Or it was our changes. I put...
It was our changes.
All of our collective changes.
Right. And so that's the one to comment on.
So the sick leave, what confused me is this, "An employee may accrue no more than 160 hours of vacation time. The maximum accrued time for a part-time employee should be prioritized." Okay. "Any additional unused accrued vacation leave may be used within 12 months of the July 1 cutoff. After 12 months, an employee may be paid out for up to 80 hours of accrued vacation time above the 160-hour maximum. Any remaining unused time will be forfeited. Accrued vacation time of up to 160 hours..."
Sounds like what we talked about, doesn't it?
"...may be paid out when an employee terminates their employment with the town." Does that make sense?
It's 12 months of, from the following year.
From the following year.
Right.
So you have 12 months to use it, to, you know, another use it, use it up.
Right, yeah.
And then it's gone.
It's gone.
Or not gone, because you can pay it half.
It's either paid, or you get, you get half, or you get paid out.
It's not gonna be all paid out.
It's not all paid out. You paid out half. Basically, it's 80 out of 160.
Well, it's not really half, though.
No, it's not.
It's, it caps out at two, two weeks. Because some guys only get two weeks.
Right.
So it wouldn't be half.
It would never be half.
Right, so it's better to make that clarification that it's, that it maxes out at two weeks.
And that is how it said in there. I just said half, because I was thinking half.
That's right. Diane, that's how it stated, though.
Okay, yeah.
So this makes sense to all of you, it doesn't make sense to me, but that's just... Okay.
I'll send you my comments, anyway.
Okay, thank you, please.
And then just resend them.
You want this?
I absolutely do not want any more paper.
Are you sure?
Ooh, for sure. All right, so I'll send you that, and then you can send that question to VLCT if you were to.
It's not to VLCT, it's to...
To our attorney, or, and attorney, and ask the question.
I have a question before we adjourn. I should have asked earlier in the meeting, but where are we at with the car on Old Quarry Road?
Well, so today is the day where the window is up for them to have found something with it, so I can call Gates, I have to send you the letter, so it's in record. I can call Gates tomorrow and see what we can do with getting it out of the way.
Okay, and then the cost of towing it is on the town?
It's on the town.
Okay. And Gates won't pay, like, would they pay for scrap metal, like...
Well, I don't think that we should go right to scrapping this person's car.
Okay.
Yeah, the standard is for somebody to take it and haul it away, and then the people, if they want the car, are contacted that it has been removed.
Right.
And then they have a certain amount of time to respond, not to so much the town. They have to go pay the wrecker, or whatever the fees were to haul that thing away.
Okay.
They have to pay that, and then they can get their car back.
And if they don't, then...
If they don't...
Then there's a window in which, basically...
Yeah, there's a certain amount of time that it has to sit there.
Yeah, and I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know that.
And if they go pay the fee to get it back, do we, does that come back to us for the cost of having it towed in the first place?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think they want the car.
No, I don't think they do either. I'm just curious, like, I don't know how it works.
Pay to have it towed instead of them having it towed, which they're not gonna do, so...
Right.
So if we, if they never go collect the car, then the cost falls on the town, and we just eat it or whatever.
I mean, I think the person hauling it away is gonna wanna be paid.
Regardless.
Yeah, so the town, basically, would be getting reimbursed if the people ever do go...
Correct.
Okay.
That's the way it could be worked.
Do they, do they, they don't care about this car? I mean...
They have given us no response.
Oh, so we don't know that?
We don't know.
And we have no idea.
Right, right. I was gonna say, if they, if they just don't care about it, they just can't, don't have the means of getting rid of it.
We have had absolutely zero responses to our attempts.
Okay, so we gotta move forward with, with our plan? Because it really needs to go.
So one time, like a million years ago, when I went and talked to them with Josh Korn, we did talk about getting that car out of there, and they did say, the woman said she was gonna look into getting it towed. So I, I'm taken from that that they don't actually want it.
I just wonder if it's, it's filled with garbage, or it's, they're using it for storage or something.
I don't really know. I'm sorry, I haven't investigated the car specifically.
There's a lot of cars up there, actually.
Yeah, like, let's not get into that. We're setting an ugly precedent with this in the first place, just to be honest, because there are more than a few cars in town right-of-way.
Right.
And so we're setting ourselves up for an interesting scenario with this into the future, but this one is been an issue, so this is the one that we're gonna start with.
We tried doing a process, a legal process.
We did a legal process.
Yeah, that's what I mean.